It's 6:30, and I'm going to call the March 19th regular meeting of the Plumeth Planning Board to Order. My able vice-chair made it by just the resonation of the gavel. We'll begin with a roll call. The present this evening, Mike Dayhern, John Kelly Selectness Representative, Brett Sutcliffe, member, Bill Hool, John Kuchenberg, Vice Chair, alternate, Paul Dragon, Ron DeBishop, Jack Scarborough, and Paul Wilson. Mr. Ranlet has called in, will be with us this evening, and I'm going to appoint Jack Scarborough to sit as a voting member for the evening. We'll move to item three on the agenda, public comments. Any member of the public who wishes to make a comment of something that isn't on the agenda, we listen to him now. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray Gosny. First off, I'd like to congratulate the planning board for the successes that you achieved at the town meeting last week and the passage of some very good warrant articles that I think are helping the town. I'm sure that the work that was done by Miriam with the TV, can I say commercial? Or infomercial?
Infomercial.
Infomercial. And our illustrious citizen behind me went a long way to secure the support in the votes that were taking place, and I encourage you to consider additional measures like that in the future. It was sometimes very complex subjects that require time to be thoroughly understood in advance of town meeting or vote. Secondly, I understand from the information that I saw in the annual report that there are a number of members of the board whose terms are up, and you may or may not be choosing or be continuing your service. I know that Fred, you and Bill are two of those individuals, and I just want to express my appreciation for the work that you've done over the years. On another matter, the Towns Energy Committee had their first meeting of the new year this past Tuesday night, and in our discussions that took place, we believe that there are opportunities that we should begin to explore with the planning board and the Towns Planner in the next few weeks about potentials to take a look at the site plan regulations and to ask questions. Are there things that perhaps many ways want to weave into those in regards to energy efficiency measures? There are a few things that are in there, such as the language that, oh, I guess it was two or three years ago, went into the preamble where we speak about those kind of things. But with the exception of maybe orientation of housing or things that deal with dark skies lighting, there's no real meat in our current site plan regulations, and there's no benefits specified in our site plan regulations that would reward either a builder or homeowner for construction that speaks to energy efficiency measures. So we'd like to do some preliminary work with the Town Planner, and then if we could, get on one or two of your meetings just to engage in a dialogue and see what potentials might be. We bring no agenda, no specifics to the table initially, but we believe we ought to explore those opportunities. So I just want to plant that seed, and we'll be in touch with the Town Planner to see about the first steps.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number four, approval of the minutes of our March 5 meeting. And we all know the drill on this. It's a very thick package, but we'll look through it page by page. If you notice any omissions or corrections, signal the chair, and we'll make sure that the record is correctly enhanced. Page one. Page four. Yes, go.
Bottom paragraph, and I verse sentence that indicates no significant construction will occur except fulfilling of any small depressions and the asphalt perimeter acre. I believe that perimeter word is inaccurate in its description of what's going to be paved. I think it should be the word entrance.
It's actually, it's actually a landing area for the bus, isn't it?
No, no. It's an entrance.
Entrance?
Yeah. We could say ingress, egress.
Okay, so you make a change to that, let's see. The entrance?
Yeah, entrance, exit.
Access.
Yeah, the perimeter implies it's going all the way around.
Right, right.
All right.
Yeah, access.
Page five.
Chair.
Chair.
Yes.
There's just a couple of misspellings. First bullet, it says blinking lot. It should be blinking light.
Where are the F under?
Under the first bullet, Mr. Kelly.
Blinking light rather than the blinking lot.
Right. And down on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 bullet, it says, I don't know if that's correct, trespass? That spelled correctly?
Trespassed it. I think so. Is there an E?
Just a different one.
I'll go check the spelling.
I think it's right. Okay, nothing further on page five. Page six.
And then on page six, the very last line on this page where it says 30 miles per hour over Tenney Mountain Highway should read over Tenney Mountain Highway Bridge to McDonald's.
Okay, you got that, Miriam?
I got mine.
Okay. And finally, page seven. Okay, make sure all the other motion or the minutes has noted corrections.
Remove, we accept.
Been moved by Mr. Scarborough and seconded by, seconded by Ms. Kuhul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You nailed us. Okay, item five on our agenda is correspondence, and we have one item there, but Miriam, I'm going to turn that to you. What should we know about?
We've got a colleague on that's asking that you appoint someone to our Local Rivers Management Advisory Committee, and so I talked to the chair. We had two ideas, Paul Wilson and Jack Scarborough. Paul Wilson researched when the meeting was. It's the last Tuesday of the month, correct?
That's correct.
And that would conflict with Conservation Commission, so I did talk to Jack Scarborough, and he's agreed to serve on that committee, Local Rivers Management Advisory Committee.
Okay. That's it? That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Well, I do want to make one announcement that whoever hasn't gotten their black New Hampshire planning and land use, I do have a box here, so make sure you pick one up if you don't have one of the new ones. It's made 2009.
Thank you, Miriam. Okay, item six is new business, and we have a major subdivision review. It'll be a discussion and a public hearing on a proposal from John March, surveyor on behalf of Brian Healy, to subdivide the 25.85 acre lot at the intersection of New Hebron Road and Texas River, PID number 222006, Zone A Agricultural into nine lots. Miriam, would you give us the overview, please?
Sure. We first looked at this subdivision at February 15, 2007, so over two years ago, and the proposal's still the same. It's to subdivide 25.85 acre parcel into nine lots. It won't have municipal water or sewer. It's going to have onsite water, which would be wells, and onsite sewer, which is septic. Lots range in size from 1.57 acres to 5.86 acres. Our ordinance requirements for the agricultural zone is just one acre, so they exceed the minimum. Most of the lots are a little less than two acres. We got a conceptual submittal on December 18, 2008, and this current submittal is a formal request for major subdivision review. Overall, I think we did have a number of concerns during our preliminary, and the developer's done a good job of addressing those. I made comments of what her concerns were and then how he addressed those comments. And for the recommendations, I voted this side. I reviewed the application. I determined that the submittal is complete, and I recommend the planning board accept the application as complete. The engineering plans previously requested have been submitted, and they're on the table, and they've been reviewed by the contracted town engineer. The town engineer's comments were mailed to you, so I hope everyone got a chance to look at those. And if the planning board decides to accept the application and approve the subdivision, staff recommends approval with all of the staff conditions. So all the conditions mentioned in my report and the conditions mentioned in the town engineer's report. And then with the following seven conditions, Mr. Chair, would be okay if I read through those, those new conditions?
Can you repeat that?
Would it be okay if I read through these conditions here?
Yes, you can. You're going to read through the engineers' four pages of these conditions?
No, we'll just cross engineer conditions. I think I sort of mentioned them here. Okay, one, that the subdivision shall not be clear cut. All state timber regulations shall be followed. All cutting and clearing shall be done in an environmentally sensitive manner. I have talked to the surveyor about that, and he's agreed to do that, and he indicated it on his new subdivision submittal that there won't be clear cutting. Two, all final state approvals shall be obtained prior to commencing construction of the subdivision. Three, all outstanding comments by the town engineer shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the town, so that's where I'm referencing the town engineer comments. Four, the roadway shall be fully constructed and stabilized prior to any stripping or grading being completed on any of the lots, or an alteration of terrain permit from New Hampshire DES must be obtained. Five, submittal of an engineer's cost estimate for the subdivision improvements excluding water and sewer lines to KV Partners for review and acceptance or adjustment, and then provide a security letter of credit or performance bond in the amount agreed upon by KV Partners to the planning office prior to construction of the subdivision. Six, fund the escrow account for construction monitoring services by KV Partners based on their estimate prior to construction of subdivision approval. And seven, the applicant shall sign a development agreement with the town before the subdivision plat will be signed and recorded. The development agreement shall include but is not eliminated the following points: A, a completion date for improvements; B, the pre-construction meeting with the town and its construction oversight engineer; C, inspections during construction; D, maintaining a positive balance in the escrow account fund; E, compliance review by the planning board at completion; F, with the release of the security for the subdivision improvements, the applicant shall provide maintenance security for a period of one year; and G, dust and erosion control measures shall be used during road construction. These are all pretty standard boilerplate requirements. Number seven. The property owner and the surveyor are both in the audience. Guess a number of the abutters on.
Thank you, Miriam. Yes?
Could I ask the planner a couple of questions on her report?
Yes, you can.
Just for clarification, when you say that there are these seven points that you've just articulated in addition to the previously mentioned ones, those are articulated in another documents with another set of numbers, or are those the ones that you have already suggested of when you responded to in bold?
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's already in the report, so.
Okay.
There's one here from the fire department.
Right, so in that, in that list, you have the last one before recommendations number one, about 50-foot greenbelt?
Right.
You end, you end that with two additional letters have requested a 50-foot greenbelt. So are you including that as part of the recommendation?
No, I didn't. That was just a note to you all. Now, if the planning board wants to do that, that is, that's something that, that should be discussed. What we're talking about, John, do you have the full size? Because I had to put out the old ones. Okay. So prior to this being subdivided, there was this 50-foot greenbelt here, and then the noise property, the abutters right here wanted a 50-foot greenbelt that the developer and the surveyor put up here. Then there's also been a request to have on along this property line here, and then also these, oh, Dennis came into my office and wanted a 50-foot buffer over here. I don't know. That's something that really planning board needs to determine because I don't know if it's, if it's getting to be overkill. Here, he has put in here clear, no clear cutting, so it's going to be no clear cutting zone, and it's on the other side of the brook, so it's, it's just going to be sort of a natural default buffer anyhow. This one, you can see it goes right into the lot, so if he did the 50-foot buffer, it would make this lot too small. It could create a hardship here for Lot 4. So that, that's why that one I did not put in as a recommendation.
You okay with that answer, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Miriam, your condition three is the omnibus condition that picks up all of the engineer's issues.
Right, right.
Okay, I think we'll have a motion on accepting the application as complete if someone would like to make one. So it's been removed by Mr. Kuchenberg and seconded by Mr. Hool that the application is complete and we will accept it. We're going to vote on the acceptance of the application. All those signify by saying aye in favor of accepting the application.
Aye.
Okay.
You know what? I write down who made the motion, who's second.
Excuse me?
I made the motion.
John, John Kuchenberg?
John Kuchenberg, seconded by Mr. Hool.
Okay.
Is our recorder not on also? So we're not, there's no audio as well as video. Is that correct?
Oh, no, it's, it's taping. It's just not broadcast now.
Okay, all right, so there is a tape.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're fine. It's just.
This is being recorded.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let us ask the applicant to come up and tell us what they have on their mind. Mr. March?
This plan is essentially the same plan that we looked at two months ago. The following revisions additions, as Miriam stated, I put on the plan no clear cutting on the wetlands playworks. This 50-foot greenbelt for the noises on the previous plan. I put the two state approvals, the wetlands and the subdivision approval on the plan. I'll just change the location plan to make it easier, have some fun on the computer. But basically, the plan is pretty much the same. Talked with our engineer yesterday. He's been going back and forth with the town engineer. He said yesterday he thought they were very close. It hasn't gone quite as fast as I would like it to go on, but.
So you're aware of the conditions as Miriam read them into the record, and you've seen the engineer's letter, which is part of that, so quite aware. Any member of the board wishes to ask a question of Mr. March? John?
Is this road going to be the responsibility of the developer not ask that the town will take it over?
At this point, yes.
At this point, yes. As I understand it, they're trying to discourage the town from taking over a lot of these development roads because of, I think that the town road aging, whatever you want to call it, is stretched right to the limit, and I think they're trying not to authorize any more of those.
I understand. There's two questions here. One is the road is going to be built to Town of St. Louis. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Whether it's been accepted or not is a, is a, it has to be accepted by the board of select.
That's right.
That's something that can, may or may not happen down the line, but the road will be built to the standards that are required for eventual acceptance of the road by the town. Not guaranteed, possible.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, is, is there a possibility that at some time they're going to ask the town to take it over?
Yeah, that's a question that Mr. March or the developer would have to respond to. Would you respond to this question? Well, Mr. Healy?
I would think that, yes, when it's completed, we seek to have the town take it over, the town road.
I know that Chatham and Lane, the town has been taking that over, and they're trying not to take the roads over. And this, this is not only Chatham. This is a movement to the whole state of New Hampshire on the development of not having roads taken over. And I just thought that, that had better be brought in front instead of six months down the line.
You appreciate it? Okay, thank you. Further questions to Mr. Scarborough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will there be a bond regarding the road development?
Yes, Miriam mentioned it will be.
Okay.
Yeah, we're requiring that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Further questions?
Mr. Kuchenberg? The developer seems to have been very amenable about the initial 50-foot buffer, and it seems that this area is already going to be, have no cut clause to it. Would the developer be open to extending, extending that buffer around the property the way the neighbors have asked?
Well, we talked about it at length, Mr. Healy and I talked about it at length, and these lots over here are already small, and we're not allowing clear cutting anyway, so in effect, in fact, there is, there is a greenbelt. You're only going to clear the driveway and house and the yard area.
Yes, Ron.
Yeah, and in regards to the question, just the roads, what happens, you're doing that now as a developer, I mean, as it's being developed, but when this person purchased these two lots here, then they're pretty, they can pretty much go and cut that if they want to. Is that correct or not correct?
Well, this plan will be recorded, and that'll be written in the deed.
As a no-cut zone?
Right.
That's how it'll be recommended?
That, that brook is pretty wide. It would not be easy to get over there. You'd have to, have to build a bridge for a reason.
Further questions for Mr. March? Yes, Mike?
Mr. March, where, when this brook, clay brook, overflows its banks, do you have an idea where it first leaves the brook and where it eventually goes back in? Because we saw some pretty, pretty dramatic pitchers not that long ago, and I'm really curious where the pitcher has taken.
They were taken here.
They were taken from here.
Yeah, you can see that they're open. This is all.
Down by the bank, I think they took it down.
Yeah, right here.
And with everything that happened in Ashland not that long ago, it's all still fresh in our minds, and I know that's probably once in a 500-year type of event, but I'm very familiar with how the flooding comes in on the Pembroke River, but not so much on Clay Brook, and it'd be nice to know exactly how much of this area is covered with water, how deep possibly in some areas. If I lived in one of these surrounding homes, and maybe my home was a little bit higher, when the water comes in and there's all these septic systems and it's, it's, you know, starting to leach that stuff, that stuff out of the system potentially, and I'm not an engineer, but could it potentially go into a shallow well? I got a lot of questions there, but.
Highly unlikely. Might I respond to that?
Yes, please, yeah. To, to stay here?
Yes.
Yeah, fine, yeah, that's, that's acceptable.
The, the federal flood control floodplain maps show this flood zone A, flood zone X. So we've shown that here, and our septic houses are well outside that. Well, it is.
So you're saying that the elevation pretty much changes here, so when it does flood, it doesn't go beyond this line?
This, yeah, you'll get five, 10, 15, 20 feet higher.
And it's 100-year floodline is on that? I mean, I don't.
It's the line off the FEMA maps.
Which one is that?
Zone A, zone X.
Yeah, this is the bottom.
That, it's the blue one. This is the contour line.
And those rectangular septic areas are well above that, the intersection between the two zones.
And keep in mind that those septic areas are 4,000 square feet as required by the state of New Hampshire as part of their subdivision process. A septic system would be 1/8 of that, about 500 square feet.
Are you satisfied with the answer, Mike?
Where is the 100-year floodplain zone?
The maps haven't shown that. They've shown what they call a Zone A and a Zone X. The 100-year floodplain on Tenney Mountain Highway and Holden's Road is a result of very detailed engineering studies, expensive.
So they don't show it on this, on Clay Brook?
No, the work hasn't been done.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, you got a question?
I'm just curious, it's not even a question, but every time that the Pemmy floods, basically it's because of a very sharp bend in the river, and the river starts backing up at that point. And I realize it doesn't have the volume on Clay Brook, but I just wondered if there was any possible way of making a straight run down through there, and that way it wouldn't get caught up in this bend and start flooding.
Well, it's a very good suggestion.
Just a question.
I doubt very much that the Wetlands Bureau would allow you to do that.
That would be my guess, too, John.
They don't want you studying.
Gentlemen, we can hear you up here, so we have to have one meeting, and I'll be happy to recognize you, so I can hear murmuring down here. No, no murmuring?
No.
So I'm hearing you.
If nature hasn't straightened it out in the past 1,000 years.
There has to be something that stops that from going down through there because it's usually the least resistant, so it might be, right? It was just a question because I know that's the thing.
Kind of like on your, on your wish list, but we're, we're not going to ask them that.
The areas of the Pemmy where it's flooded, it's flat adjacent to the river. This goes up quite steeply, 10, 15, 20 feet. So that acts as a, as a buffer. I mean, it would be, you could never get permission to straighten out.
The other question is, I know that you can get determinations, and I think this would answer your question, like, you can get a determination as what is in the flood zone or floodways. There's an event, I know the town gets it, all the bank gets it all the time, and you can ask them and they give a certified answer as far as where your floodplains and floodways are, even on this brook here. So you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to worry about, you know, about previous maps and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you, John. I have a question over here from Mr. Scarborough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. More a comment. This is a primary stream source to the Pembroke River waterfront, and it falls under the Shoreline Protection Act.
No.
No?
I, I researched it. It doesn't.
It does not?
No, I did look at it, but it doesn't fall under the shoreline.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When I called them, they said it was just the Pemmy and the Baker.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, Bill?
Just a point of information for the board here. When it comes to delineating floodplain When it comes to delineating floodplains, floodways, Corps of Engineers involved with, if you want to challenge their boundaries, it's up to the private property owner to do whatever is necessary to present a challenge. And if the challenge is well documented and, and is embraced by the Corps, you as a private property owner have to submit a LOPA letter or application for them to change the maps to reflect the documentation that you presented. But the Corps themselves will not come in and do this at the request of a private party. Correct?
Thank you, Bill, for the clarification. Further questions for Mr. March? Mr. Kugenberg?
Well, on that idea of clarifications, I mean, what we've heard is concern about, you know, neighbors having their water quality, you know, corrupted. And so, can you give us some sort of assurances by describing the difference between zone A and zone X and, and how guaranteed these rectangles are to be on this, this far away from this, from that line?
Well, you wouldn't be allowed to do anything in flood, in the zone A at all. In, in the X, you are, if you look at floodplain maps in any town, they have an area under that, sometimes well defined by engineering studies, most times not, but the zone X is always buildable. And we are hundreds of feet away from Clay Brook and.
I can see that. But is zone X like buildable but with extreme caution or is it completely buildable?
It's buildable.
Don't even, don't even think twice.
It's buildable. I mean, you're going, your septic system isn't going completely underground, it'll be raised a little.
Zone X means it's, it's not an area of concern at all, so.
Okay.
Everything good is zone X. And then zone A, don't they typically call it the flood zone, 100-year flood zone, zone A?
Yeah, the maps don't actually refer to it here because that, that work hasn't been done.
Right, and, and they sort of changed their terminology, so now they say a 0.01% chance of flooding or something. They sort of changed their burden, but, but zone A is what you have to worry about. Zone X means it's not in a flood hazard or flood concern zone.
Thank you. Mike, you have a question?
Are there a lot of homes in Plymouth that are built in flood zone X? Or are they all homes that were just done before they even knew about that?
That, that flood zone X probably isn't the, the proper term. Zone X means that it doesn't flood.
Right, zone X is good.
So, we're, we've approved.
Almost every home.
Almost every home?
Well, 83 was when we adopted the last version of the, the flood maps.
They were revised in the 90s.
In the 90s as well?
Late 90s, early 2000s.
So, since the 90s, we, we've approved many subdivisions that are in zone X?
I'm sure you have.
They, they have.
Well, that's preferred. I mean, zone A is the one that you have to look at. Maybe it needs further surveying or it's in flood zone or could be in flood zone, so there's question on zone A. Zone X, it's fine, that's, yeah.
And I think what they've done, if you can clarify this for me, but they have just revised the, the zone map once again to the topographical level of, of the map.
Correct.
And they would, like, five points down here, that used to be all flood, flood zone, but now they're, they're indicating the feet above sea level and it's making a lot more detailed maps out of it. So, a lot of places that were in flood zone will not be in flood zone.
Yeah, well, last town meeting, we, we adopted the, the new terminology.
Right, and Plymouth is very blessed that we've got brand-new floodzone maps. For these places where I've worked, their, their maps are from 78 or 85 and ours are, I don't know, 2006, 2007. They're, they're very current.
They're the best in the area.
Yeah, they're really good.
I have a question.
A comment.
Again, more a comment. Over the last two years, we've had more snowfall than we've had in the last 10 years, so we need to be cautious about considering what the flood zones are. There is potential for more flooding.
Just a point of information, we have had more floods in the end of August, I guess, than we ever had in the springtime in Plymouth.
Yep. Okay. No further questions? One more question?
On those pictures that we saw of all the flooding that happened, I don't know if it was two springs ago, you're saying that there'd be no homes, septic systems in any of the areas that showed standing water from those photos? I mean, was there any standing water that came up into here we saw on those photos or you could pretty much identify that all the homes and septic systems will be outside of that area?
Well, I, I can't answer that question because I wasn't.
Well, Mike, it's not a fair question from Mr. March, there were these photographs. They were photographs produced by one of your butters and unfortunately, they weren't as accurately located as we would have liked them to be. They were very dramatic, I grant you that, but they weren't, they weren't part of the applicant's package. They were produced by, I think, you know, the noises had those photographs and were, we're being told that they were shot from that corner here.
It appeared to be.
That foot, because there was open space in front of the camera, but we don't know for sure.
It doesn't indicate where the noises' house is and where the barn is. Is that their house?
Yeah, that's the house.
Where's the barn? The barn is here because that's a local view of where those pictures were taken and that barn sits down in here somewhere, open fields all through here. So, I don't, I wish that they would indicate all the different houses and all the different structures.
So, I think that some member of the board had never seen the photographs, so it's probably not a fair thing to bring up, but they were dramatic, there was a lot of water moving and it did make an impression on at least you and myself as well. So, if there are no further questions from the board, yes, there are one more question from the board. Yes, Bill?
Again, just an observation for the benefit of the board. When past flooding events may have occurred in this area, it may have been exacerbated by a culvert situation that was undersized under New Hebron Road. And that culvert has been completely rebuilt and, and the opening of the passage is much greater than what the culvert provided for before. Now, that, these pictures that were taken, that culvert had already been rebuilt and was functional, I believe, when those pictures were taken. That should sort of reduce the risk of flooding along the lines that we're talking about.
Okay, Bill, thank you. So, back, if there are no further questions, I'm going to be opening a public hearing on the proposed subdivision of the, in the area of Texas Hill Road and New Hebron Road. I'm going to open the public meeting, hearing at 7:04 and it is open. If you wish to speak, I would require you to have signed in, you would then identify yourself and we'd be delighted to hear from you. So, where anybody who would be in opposition to this applicant's proposal, I would, the board would like to hear from you. So, yes, sir?
Phil Noice, there's three culverts on that road. One has been replaced, two have not. If you look at the pictures on the east end, the road was raised about 20 years ago with Fred Huzzy, the road agent. That culvert was not replaced. The one down at my pit was not replaced. That is caved in on one end. That's in the center of my property. Now, as flooding goes, I've got pictures, they have labels, but going back to the Joanne Burns property, the way flooding is, it's eating right into the banks the size of this area right here. I haven't got pictures here, but I can show you pictures. That brook will be 100 feet wide. Go clear back up to the big pine tree. If any of you are familiar from the brook to the old Blubber House, you familiar, John? The big pine tree? That, in that area, that whole field will be flooded and you'd have, to the bottom of the brook, probably 100 feet of water. And at that point, I'm going to say 150, 200 feet wide on the brook. Now, some of the pictures that are here, they're on the east end of my boundary and it's showing the water coming down through. Would you be this, right up in, in here? And you've got an old wet area coming down through. Now, the reason I say it's wet, 1956, we tried logging that, we couldn't do it in the winter, too wet. Only took out 35,000 feet of lumber. Ground wouldn't hold a, a farm tractor. 76, that was logged. They wanted to go in here, dumped in two loads of gravel, went right out of sight. So, they had to come over onto my land, which I gave them permission to yard out because I'm higher here. Well, like I say, you're going to need pontoons on your foundation. It's wet, and I've been there for seven years and, you know, I wouldn't build. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Noice. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to this application? Linda, I'll get you next. Like this gentleman here, please?
Yeah, Steve Dennis, up in the bottom. I have two questions more than I can help. Did I get my rezone?
No, we didn't, we didn't go here because the lots are too small. But we're not allowing the lots to be clear cut, so that essentially you will have at least 50 feet.
I do have, Mr. Farber logged over here and he, he's turned that into a sanctuary.
Conservation area, is that what they call it?
Right next to me. And we have a family of ravens that's growing in, that's in a tree right here. They've been coming. I don't, obviously, they're not the same birds, but they've been using the same nest for 20 years and that tree is right on the line. That's the only reason I asked for the.
We want to cut it down.
As long as you don't cut it down. And I do have one other question. We're, we're all talking about water here. The back old 50 feet of my field has had four or five inches of water in it for the last two years. And I'm higher than this, I, I just don't know. I mean, if the water's not running out of here, it's got to be, it's got to be because this is pretty well filled up.
That's a pretty relatively dry lot. We had a wetland scientist go in and, and flag every wetland on.
Well, I put, I put a load of backhoe in here and I buried right to it and all I did was drive. I didn't dig, I didn't do anything. I was just driving across the, the grass and it. Picture this, I do this.
Okay. Thank you. Linda, I promised you next. Please identify yourself.
The thing I want to say is that who still have the pictures? I'd be more than happy to explain where they're taken and I'll think I'll write up the pictures if, if the board wants that.
We'll wait.
I understand, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sarah?
Hello. Um, what is your name, please? Bruce Wiggott. About five, and some other questions. Were you to obtain your state wetlands?
I'm too bored with your questions.
Sorry. When did they apply to, for their state wetlands license?
For their.
For their license, yeah. When was that?
Took about a year, I believe.
When was it?
About, the, the approval date is on the plan and I think it's January 13th, 2009. My memory tells me that it took about a year to do it.
Okay, so that was prior to their wetland delineation?
Excuse me, sir?
It was prior to their wetland delineation? When that went in?
We had to submit plans to the wetlands board with a wetlands delineation stamped by a certified wetlands.
Okay, did they do any soil borings or test pits?
We did a test pit on every one.
You did? Okay, see where they are?
Sure.
Do you do any soil borings to get soil that's particular? Like, I work for an engineer.
Are you, are you on the button, Mr. Wiggott?
I'm on the road, I'm not in the first town. I live, like, five houses up from the noises. That's a typical test pit. It's a test pit in here. Did you do any soil borings? Was it dug down 60, 60 feet? Did you do any ephemeral testing? Did they do any ephemeral testing? Like, in the springtime, check to make sure that they were in the, they were throughout the summer? They did no testing so far this spring?
We, we, we put no requirement on them to do that. I want to know whether they did or not. Would you answer that question, Mr. March?
The wetland scientist certified that there were no vernal pools on the property.
There were no vernal pools?
She's pretty thorough. We have certified wetland scientists, when they kind of tell us that, we have no way of anticipating whether.
There's standing water, from those pictures, there's standing water in there throughout the year. I go hiking and I ride through there all the time. There's standing water in there throughout the year.
I don't know the exact technical definition.
A vernal pool, a vernal pool is standing water. Vernal pool is year-round standing water and ephemeral pool is something that comes up every springtime or after any.
Yeah, puddling is not a vernal pool. You would agree with that, right?
What was that? Puddling? No, that's a, considered an ephemeral pool. In the state right now, there's a bill, 1579 FN, that is suggesting a 75-foot setback for all houses from delineated wetlands. Has that been considered by the board at all?
No.
It's some, there's 82 towns in the state of New Hampshire that have wetland mandated setbacks?
Yeah, that would require a town meeting process for you to adopt that. It was not on our last two years.
Okay.
And it's no longer, it's not on our, on our horizon to look at at this instant.
Okay, well, it's something that, it's coming through the state congressional bodies right now.
Yeah.
So, of kind of asking the board for some forethought and look down the road that, I mean, towns like Bo have 125-foot setback. The housing structure has to be 125 feet from a delineated wetland to be able to have a structure. And in all 82 of those towns, there's setbacks for the septic systems, so that the septic needs to be 150 feet away from any standing water or delineated wetland. Do we, in the town of Plymouth, have one of those?
No, if it's a state law, then DES would be the.
It's currently not a state law. These are town.
Then it's not, not on our plan. And tonight, we don't have any interest in it. Down the road, I can't tell you.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be it. It's just my concern that when you put, when you remove wetlands and put hard surfaces over an area that's already prone to flooding, within the last 10 years, the Clay Brook flooded, taking out the bridge on Reservoir Road. If you take out the wetlands, the bodies of water that hold the water and let it go slowly into the Clay Brook, if you affect those by altering the wetlands in that area, it will affect the brook.
We get, we get the picture. Thank you. Any other comments relative to this applicant of the negative nature? Yes, ma'am?
Alan of Plummer. One statement, one question. I've lived in that area, two and a half miles away, all my life. I grew up there. For the last 32 years, I've lived across from it and to the best of my knowledge, I have, I do not ever remember seeing that land dry. There's always been water there. I, I don't remember seeing it dry, ever. And my question is, we've had all this snow, we've got all this rain, and when you get this land that's already soaked, and then you get the snow and the rain and you get the septic. the septic systems that are oozing out, where, where's all that going to go?
Madam, I, I can't answer your question because I would assume that the septic designs were such, uh, insulation would be such, it would drain probably and not ooze out. So, you know, it's, it's not, the engineering that's behind this appears to meet our requirements, which are set down by ordinance and by state law. So even though we may not personally like a particular development, but if it meets the environmental standards, then the board has to look upon it as something that has to be considered, feral. Whether we like it or not, or whether we, we think that it, it might be too wet sometime of the year, the way they've sited their houses, their wells, and their septic systems may meet the engineering requirements of DES and the other pertinent ordinances. So I, I can't really respond to your question of whether it's gonna leak out or not. I, I would doubt that it did. Thank you.
Let's hope it does.
Sir?
Uh, Dean Yen. I don't own any property. My sister, uh, the Burns property, the 32 acres, uh, it's under Chris Burns right now. That's one of the, they live in Bedford. If I could, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions for them. It couldn't be, it's under Chris Burns' name, he couldn't be here tonight.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I actually talked with him by phone. He called over here.
One minute.
This was a million months ago.
Mr. Yen, what's, what's the question? Is it a comment you're making?
I was, I had wrote about the buffer zone. I didn't make any other meetings because I didn't know about what was really going on and pay any attention.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to look where Claybrook comes down through there, so you could...
Please. That's probably the better flat there. Here's the, no clear cutting here against Chris Burns.
Okay. Is there gonna be any, uh, you gonna put any lots over there across this brook?
No, no, no.
Okay, so, I mean, there's no need for a buffer zone here.
No.
I mean, you've got it already.
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, uh, that was his, he hasn't seen one of these maps, I don't think.
I mailed him a couple.
Oh, you did, yeah? Okay. I talked to him yesterday, and he was on the cell phone, and I said we didn't get too good a reception. But, uh, okay, that was, that was my question, and, you know, it, this piece of land has been, well, both sides of the road have been in the family for many years. And, uh, it was left to my sister after my folks died. But, uh, you know, and I, I agree with the, with the rest of the people. I mean, it is wet down through there. I remember my father was gonna do something with it years ago, but couldn't, you couldn't do anything with it because it was so wet. But not only that, it's, uh, it's the rest of it over there. I mean, this is a little bit higher land, back towards Adams Road, anyway.
Yeah, this is actually, actually pretty high here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I just wanted to, I told him I would, if it would be okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yen. Anyone else who'd speak in opposition? I'm gonna recognize this gentleman first. You, sir.
My name's Norm White. And although I'm not in the butter, I am, I am close neighbor. And I've lived in the area for well over 20 years now. And I've bought that property numerous times, actually, probably two, three times a year. And it's always wet. And so I, now, I do have a couple of questions, you know. First of all, you know, we have a lot of neighbors here, and the dwelling density in that area is far less than what's being proposed. So, you know, as a result, everyone's really quite concerned. But my first question is, has the planning board done a site walk? Have they, an official site walk by the planning board?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Okay. The fact that everything is, I mean, from, you're hearing from all the neighbors about the concerns with water and, and potential effect of water quality, you feel it'd be, it would be prudent to have a site walk?
We would have to take that as a board discussion. I, I, highest chair will not respond to that.
Okay. And as a, has the board asked for a, for a high-intensity soil survey?
No.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it's quite possibly another prudent thing to do. It's not that I'm disputing the, the results, the results of the soil scientists, but there are many soil scientists on board right now that are grandfathered. And I know a few that just plow roads. And it's not that they wouldn't be qualified, but with the, you know, the emotional status of this development in, in the neighborhood, I think it probably would be prudent if we, if we did cross every T and dot every I. I'm kind of wondering, uh, I'm wondering what the results were from, from Natural Heritage Foundation as...
Negative.
Negative. Okay. And who will, who will supervise the, the construction in terms of road compaction and making sure that that's, that's done according to spec?
One of the requirements of, uh, of our approval will be the setting up of an escrow and having our county engineer, who is a consulting engineer, be, uh, watchdog relative to conforming to the requirements that we're gonna put down on this if it's approved.
Okay, just to reiterate, you know, it's an emotional thing. We all live close by, and we wanna see it done properly. And, and I'd like to make sure that everything's done as thoroughly as possible. And if need be, maybe the, you know, the site plan could be reevaluated and the density, density spread out a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. White. Sir, I'll recognize you now.
Uh, Bob Brummer, I'm in the butter. Can you tell me when the, the test pits were initially done? Done in October of 97? No, 2007. 2010. And how, how, I, just a little education for me. What, what's the requirement there? They dug and left open for a while?
No, 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 no. It's against the law to leave them open. You make a test pit of the backhoe, I want the results. I'm certified by the state to do that. Then we fill it in. So I send those results to the state with my professional stamps, surveyor and septic designer. The state comes out and passes judgment. We have state subdivision approval.
So you actually looked at the, the soil, or do you send a sample to the state?
No, I'm, I'm certified by the state on the test pits. I have been for 30 years.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, it's, forgive me, I'm not accusing at all. It, it strikes me it's a little conflict of interest that you're representing the developer, but you're also approving the, um...
You, you have to understand what goes with a professional...
And, and thank you for the, the education.
If, if, if I were to fabricate anything at all...
Sir, may I, all questions are through the chair, please.
Time, my, forgive me.
And I will ask whatever expert witness we deem appropriate.
Thank you.
Your question, you're questioning whether it's his certification, and he's allowed by law to do what you're, you're questioning.
Yeah, and that's what I'm asking. Yes.
It's, it's illegal.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, is, again, just a little clarification. The, um, there's a lot of talk about green belts, and we actually have a green belt on the back of our property, when I understand that that is written in the deed that it should not, shall not be clear cut. But does that also mean that, that the eventual owners can't cut down whatever trees they wish as long as they're not clear cutting?
Okay, it would depend on the language of the covenant. And we don't know what the language looks like.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this applicant? You've already spoken. I have to go through first, Mr. Nice. No one else? Then, Mr. Nice, you can speak again, please.
Question, back to water again. Round figures are 25 acres, forgot. You're gonna take approximately nine acres out, clear cut it for nine houses. An acre isn't that big. Round figures, 200, by, 208 feet by 208 feet, about. So you're gonna have nine acres taken out, it's gonna be clear cut for a house, garage, lawn, paint, your tool ups, or whatever. So that leaves you, I don't know how much is gonna come out for the road. Let's say an acre? Uh, I don't know, I'm just pulling a figure. Uh, I have no idea what you're pulling out for acres for, uh, the road, uh, the road. So you may end up taking out, uh, 10, 11 acres out of the 25. How's that gonna affect the water flow in an already wet area? Secondly, going back to water, water runs downhill. The vein of water comes right along from my water supply, along the edge of New Hebron Road, into the pit, shoots a 45-degree angle right up to the Dennis property. And at one time, he was on that vein. And then it runs up across Texas and up on the mountain. But you've got, uh, so many houses in this wet area. I don't care, you can't help but have seepage from septic system. I don't care how bad, how good, or whatever. You've got this one year, there's seeping. I've got a state-approved septic system, and I'll tell ya, it'll seep. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody like to speak in support of this application? Would anybody like to speak in a general nature on this application? Mr. March?
I'd just like to address a couple of points. The planning board didn't, didn't make a site visit, but the conservation commission did last May, and we walked the entire site back there.
That's true. Thank you.
And, um, let's see, one other... That's it.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board at 7:30 AM. All right, now I'll recognize you, Mr. Dragon.
Uh, I'm trying to get a perspective. I'm not a voting member here tonight. Is it my understanding that the number of people that's sitting out here as a butters or parties interested in this subdivision are opposed to this subdivision, and that their water supply or whatever will be adversely affected with this development? This is where I'm at at this point. I've heard a lot about wetlands here. They've been addressed, as far as I know, through the competent agencies, the environmental department, environmental service, and, uh, environmental engineers. Is it, do you really feel your, your water supply and quality will be...
I don't think it's a fair question to ask the crowd, but you can...
Well, we're gonna get a perspective of this.
Well, the perspective is, we asked if anybody's in favor, but no one's been up. So you can assume they're either neutral or opposed. So, but we, we're not gonna poll them. So that's really, your, your question is of that nature. So you can draw the conclusion that most people are not in favor of this because no one spoke in favor of it. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Scarborough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a certified water operator in the state of New Hampshire, and understanding water and wetlands, surface water flows, I have grave concern regarding, um, impervious surfaces being added to a wetland along a stream that is within the flood plain. And I will say that for now, and I'll cast a ballot later.
Okay. Rod, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm just unsure how this all works. But say, you know, they've, they've done everything they're supposed to do. They got the state's approval, they got everybody involved, everybody approval, the, the test was done, and then all of a sudden, three years down the road after this development's done, and something crazy happens to this brook, and, and, um, things start happening. What, bad? Where does the, where does, did everything lie? Whose fault is it? Is it just, oh, well? You know, how did, how does that really...
Well, again, that's a question we really, really can't speculate on.
Right, but I just wanted to get a feel of...
Yeah. Well, I, I'm, I don't think I can give you any help, any help.
No past history.
Mr. Kelly?
We seem to, uh, be able to have site, on-site inspections during the last couple of years that I've been here, on a lot less questionable land than what this is now. And I just think, in all fairness to all the butters and the people that are interested, that at least we should take a walk through this. I, I have my own doubts because just by observation, if you, and they, they do this with lumbering all the time, they fly over a spot, and they can tell where water is if there's a lot of, um, fir trees there. They, they demand a lot of water. And, and that area right there is, is overcrowded with, with fir trees. So I just think it would be fair to everybody, and, and I think we might be a little derelict of our, of our duty not to at least walk the land.
Well, I can be kind of... This came up once before. It's the time of the year. Number one, you'd learn nothing walking it right now. You've got 16 inches to two feet of snow there. Maybe you'd learn something in August, it might be wet in August to September. It's, uh, but I don't, I don't, I, I would say at this point, number one, no, no one went during the conceptual. We've seen these people three times now. No member of the board brought up the idea of a site walk. We never discussed it.
I, I believe the conceptual plan enough was thrown into detail anyway.
Yeah, sorry, you're not a part of the city. But, but there was no dialogue around it either, so... You know, I'm, I'm just saying, it's probably not a bad idea. It'd be a bad idea right now because we'd learn nothing. We scheduled over the next 30 days, we learned very little. It, it would probably be, it would probably show a lot of water, and I could take you probably just about anywhere in Plymouth for 30 days now, and you couldn't have found a lot of water. But, so, we haven't done one of these things.
I, I get, what, what I'm saying is, once you put these houses, I mean, Mr. Scarborough, once you put these houses on that plane, it's gonna be really hard to dig up, uh, dig them up if you find out that we're wrong. So I'd rather be over cautious and maybe wait for a period of time, and then have the embarrassment of, of saying, gee, they were completely right, than, than I would to say that we were completely wrong. And the thing is that, that, the thing is that, that, I don't believe they're gonna go right out and build 25 houses right down anyway.
I hope they're gonna build nine anyway.
Or nine, wherever it is. So, the, the, I'm just thinking of the acre, but the thing is that, that, I just think that we should be overly cautious because the last, the last, some of these lots are right over Claybrook.
I think, I think we, I, I, I understand what you're saying. And I don't, I don't think you're gonna, I wouldn't wanna beat it any longer. And you'll, you'll have an opportunity to vote tonight, too.
Well, I know you won't.
Okay. Mr. Dragon?
In my head, I just, I keep going, looking at both sides from the applicant and from the concerns of the people here. The, the lot sizes aren't too different from the house lots that are already there where people are living. And if there's a huge difference between the house lots that are there and how wet it is, and because they knew where to put the lots, and everything else is extremely wet, that's one thing. If it's about the same, then I'd say, you know, why is it fair for someone to have their lots and to say, I've got mine? I'm gonna deny you of yours. I'd have a little bit of a problem with that. But if there is a drastic difference in where they put their lots and why compared to what, what's on the rest of this lot, I, I can see a problem, I have a problem with both, looking at it from both sides. So I, I sympathize with the applicant. He wants to do something with his lot, and he, he has property rights, and, and that's always the way I look at things, but...
You'll be agonizing murder in a few minutes?
Yeah, I will.
Yes? Yes, Paul?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to speak because I did walk this property with the Conservation Commission. We did, as Mr. March say, said, walk it in May, so the, the snow was gone then, for sure. It was obvious to all of us that there is a lot of water on the property, and the biggest concern we had was about the road that's being put in there because... Because we see the wetlands that are on either side of the road, but there's, that actually represents drainage because to the, the way we're looking at this plat, to the right is uphill and to the left is downhill. So water is, wants to flow across the road. And the road then is going to intercept, the, the development road is going to intercept a lot of that flowing water. And so it needed to be channeled, and it was, the engineering called for it to be channeled through culverts in several places along the way. And it wasn't really clear to us what effect that was going to have. It was a, it was a subject of concern from the Conservation Commission, but then it went to the state, and the state approved it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask just a procedural question?
Yes, please.
We have a town engineer at our disposal to review their engineer's plan. Have we ever had a wetland scientist review?
No, we have not proposed wetland scientist. We do not usually retain. We require applicants, and it's, usually it's their benefit to retain certified wetlands delineated. We, as a board, at my knowledge, have never done, and I would go to my legacy guy on my right, if he can correct me whether we've ever retained one or not. Can I be, uh?
I can, I can think where, there was only one occasion where a wetland scientist was retained by the town, and that was on the Walmart site.
Okay, so it was a matter of practice apparently done. That being said, now the chair is going to weigh in with a couple of observations and questions, and I'll direct it to Mr. March. What was the calculus that you and the developer went through that decided there'd be nine houses rather than twenty-one?
When I design a development, I like it to be in harmony with the land. Don't try to recommend too, too many lots. Mr. Haley didn't say, oh, no, this isn't enough, got to have more. He let me design it. I've been designing lots in subdivisions for thirty-five years, and he was fine with it. And a lot, I might add, a lot of my developers would say, oh, no, I've got to have more lots.
All right, so nine. Why wasn't five? Why not three? Where, where's the break point where you decided nine was the correct number?
It's just sort of a feeling that I have from all my experience, where every lot would be nice. Some people like one acres, some people like three, some people like five. I like to give a mix.
My other observation is that, you know, in the last three years, we've approved a couple of very large subdivisions, which frankly have gone nowhere. And the economy, of course, is the scariest thing you can imagine. Both of these happen to be on Fairgrounds Road. The most recent visit we've had, the guy's thinking of making a cemetery out of it because it's a more predictable market. So it's a, you know, I'd be very nervous if I were sitting in Mr. Haley's shoe, but the board isn't in the, in the business of doing market planning or second-guessed business plans. We're here protecting the environment in the public interest. But I, I've got, I've got concerns that there's too much density on this land, and I frankly would be more comfortable with a much lower density because of the water. The water, those, those pictures were very sober when we saw them, regardless of where the angle was, there's, there's a lot of water moving. So I will then, Bill, you had your hand up?
I had a question for the developer, surveyor here. Are there plans for any covenants and restrictions on this property, on Mr. Development?
Yes.
Okay. Those were actually mailed to you. There was some copy of this.
Covenants and restrictions.
You have them?
Yes, it was mailed as part of the application.
The second part of my question is relative to covenants and restrictions. The culvert issue that Mr. Wilson raised is one that I have. I did take a look at the site. I did go out there and wander through it in the fall, quite some time ago, when this was first coming before us. But in terms of the culverting that's going to be done under the roadway, culverts are only as effective as their openings into the culvert. And in any subdivision or any roadway, culverts, as we well know, tend to get blocked and obstructed, and their effectiveness is compromised. I think in this particular case, with the topography being what it is and the drainage going to be what it's going to be, that there has to be some kind of assurance within the covenants and restrictions on the subdivision itself, that those culverts are kept clear by either the developer or the property owners that have culverting, abutting their properties. And that could be an annual maintenance item that is addressed to assure that they remain functional.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you, Bill. Now, when we, we move to the next phase of this discussion, I'll ask my vice chair, and Bill, who's got some of his experience. If there was a strong feeling on the part of the board that a site walk would be useful, which I have my doubts, then we would probably look at tabling this and requiring them to come back until we completed the site walk. That's, that's something that we could consider. Or we could, we could put this voted on its merits this evening with all the restrictions and requirements that we've been talking about, and maybe even adopting the covenant question you raised. So I'm of a mind to look for a motion on moving this, up or down, and let the board speak.
Might there sort of also be a third option? The first option you proposed, which would be a site visit, seems to me to be a useful idea if we believe that the overwhelming community sentiment around this project is in direct opposition to the data that we have in front of us, that has been certified that this is, on paper, a doable project. So that first suggestion of yours says, well, maybe we could gauge it ourself. I think another option, the third option, might be to pursue what Mr. Kelly and Mr. Houle spoke to you about before, was to maybe get another scientific perspective, just since we're done with the Walmart site. Maybe they give us some converging evidence.
I, I, I frankly think we would be doing the public and the applicant a disservice, taking them through additional delay. I think, I'm going to, I'm going to look for a motion for an up and down of this tonight. Mr. Hall.
Just my observation, to add to what Paul said. What I saw of the land, it, no, it is a problematical parcel to develop in the way that is being proposed. But again, I think to the credit of Mr. March, and I live in a subdivision that he designed, and we have a good deal of wetlands in my subdivision, I think that it's not unreasonable to accommodate the, the structures that they have identified for this subdivision in the way he's got it subdivided. I don't think, from what I saw of the site, that I, as an engineer even, can make a judgment that could be countervailing to the certifications that have been represented to us by the applicant and by our own engineer. I think it's folly to think that we are smart enough to be able to see things that, that they cannot. I trust the professionalism that stands behind our own counsel as an engineer, and the professionalism of the developers' assets here in bringing forward the, the development that he is proposing.
Further discussion before we look for a motion? I want to recognize Mr. Kelly first.
If, if, is this where the rectangle drawing, is that where the house is going to be? Is that where the septic tank is going to be?
No, that rectangle is a requirement of the state of New Hampshire. When you did a test fit, you have to show four thousand square feet, which is, those are eighty feet by fifty feet boxes.
And that's where the septic system is?
It'll go somewhere inside.
Go somewhere inside.
It has to be.
And that's seventy-five feet from, from the well.
Right, by state.
And so where would the, if, if the septic system is going to hear and the well's going to hear, where is the house going to be?
Well, that would be up to the lot owner.
I understand that, but that's pretty close to the brook.
Lot six, for instance. I would, this is my lot, I would probably put it right here. And keep in mind that the eighty by fifty, four thousand square feet is a prime of the state. Here's the actual size of the septic. One eighth size.
Okay. Any, any further discussion?
The town planner.
Town planner?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that we do have the town engineer who reviewed these plans, and the recommendation number six is that we have KB Partners, the contracted town engineer, monitor it. And if he sees any anomaly with the wetlands, what he actually observes out there, and he'll look when they start construction, which will be when the snow is melted. In the past, he's always called in that specialist when needed. For example, when we had that issue with Blueberry Hill, and there was issues about geotechnical, then he asked the developer to have it certified by a geotechnical engineer. So he's looking at this, and he does put, wetlands is one of the things that he does review. So if he feels that this is not accurate, then he would call in the wetland scientists at that point. But it's not for us to question someone's certification. It, it is something during construction that I'm recommending that he be over, there, that's why I said, you know, to construction, and also to monitor the construction. And then if something doesn't meet the plan, that he would call in the appropriate person.
I would add to that.
I'll go back to Dan Smith, Johnny, here first.
I think I'm feeling pretty compelled to listen to what our town engineer is telling us. I also, I mean, he's got just about everything out of flood zone A. Would it make, is there, isn't there anything that could make the abudders feel a little bit more comfortable about this project? And my main question is, is there anything that, that someone, an owner that buys lot six, seven, and eight, that actually abut Clay Brook? Is there anything that that homeowner could do from their house to Clay Brook that could really make things worse? Or is this project, could it actually, from what Mr. Houle said, possibly improve the drainage by doing this project?
Well, we have two professional engineers looking at the drainage, our engineer and the town engineer, and they're discussing this back and forth, and we're not allowed to, we can neither increase nor decrease water going off the property. So their plans show how they will resolve this.
Follow-up question?
Could it possibly, if I could ask Mr. March? Could, couldn't the project still be viable with the nine lots if somehow they could do something with the land that's closest to the brook? Or is that going to take away the market value of the property that goes to the brook? They could somehow, not clearcutting, you could leave ten trees.
They're not clearcutting anyone.
What's that? Oh, I know. Even, even if you don't use the, if you use the terminology clearcutting, I think that means clearcutting everything in a couple acre piece. You could leave five trees, it's not clearcutting. Isn't there anything that could be done to alleviate the concerns of the abudders in, in the areas, especially flood zone A, that a landowner couldn't do something that could damage the area more?
Well, he's certainly not going to be allowed to build there for the septic system.
Yeah, but he could do other things, I suppose.
I mean, you're, what you're doing, you're, you're leading him to say tighten his covenants or revert the restriction. They haven't come forward yet. It sounds like something would make it more acceptable to you. I'm going to have a comment from Mr. Houle, and then I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up again and try to, try to get a motion out of this crowd.
Two things. One, a follow-up to Miriam. If KB Partners saw a need for other expert advice and counsel when he sees the on-site development proceeding, that is provided for within the development agreement that will be signed by the developer. And he can call in that expert, and it's at the expense of the developer. It's not at the expense of the town. But it is a third party if he feels there's a need for it, not for one point. The second point is a question for Miriam. Has our town council reviewed the covenants and restrictions that are proposed for the subdivision? That's usually a practice that we would require that they be passed in front of our town council.
Okay. No, I haven't done it. It's my impression that, that the covenants were always a private matter, so I'm not used to having the municipal attorney look at the private covenant.
It's been the practice in this community that any covenants and restrictions relative to a subdivision do go before council. So I would add that as a requirement to those requirements that we've already set forth.
Keeping in mind, we're not the enforcement.
Exactly.
Mr. Cooper.
Well.
If you're going to make a motion.
No, no, the, I mean, the recent comments, I think, are, are very comforting, I guess, in terms of the spirit of trusting the experts and having, and having a certain amount of, of a duality of that the town has its interests being represented by experts, as well as the developer has already put out in efforts to have a reputable survey taken. I mean, I am struck by some of the comments that have been made tonight in the, in the audience and by the board, that when we, when you look at this, I mean, the existing residence that's, that's abutting is really quite close to being almost in zone A compared to the septic areas, and I would imagine a house would be above the septic area so that it could take advantage of having gravity feed into the septic area. And that in terms of everybody speaking about the way water flows downward, that that residence also is, is below seven hundred and fifty, and all these proposed, proposed development is much higher. So I, I feel that that again points to the idea that, that somebody's, you know, paid attention to the way this has been laid out and tried to propose something that will work.
Okay. I'm going to speak now, Bill. I'll go back to you, because I have a counterpoint. And I've explored this with the planner some time ago. There's an old saying, sometimes you hold your nose and vote one of those things. It's a, after you've looked at all the facts, you know, you're put here to use some common sense and some judgment, and probably not to just throw everything over the wall to the professional engineer. You're here for some value added, too. So it's, it could be a cop out saying, well, the engineers did all of this, it's got to be right. Well, you can not dig too far to see some huge engineering disasters right in your own present lifetime. So I'm inclined to think that sometimes there's a project that makes you a little nervous. There's a lot of people sitting out here in this crowd tonight that add it to that feeling. There's some discomfort. And I'm, even though the engineering numbers may look good to them, they've been around a while, and they've seen tap holes where they shouldn't be perhaps. So I'm just saying, as a board member, not as your chair, that I, I do listen to engineers. I was one. So it's, don't draw any conclusions. But the, but that's all I'm going to say then. And I'm going to have one more to recognize over there. And I think we've got to get moving here. We're going to start to look to shape some kind of motion in time. Mr. Houle, one last comment?
I have no further comments.
Okay. You can make one comment, John, yes. You can make a motion, do if you want to.
I might do that before I get through. With John's remark, you've got to remember that most of the houses that are really affected by the floodwaters or the excess water were built quite a few years ago, when, when a lot of these regulations were more relaxed than what they are now. I can show you houses in Plymouth that, that, as of today... I can show you houses in Plymouth that as of today, people would say no immediately. So don't take that into consideration, or do take it into consideration, is where all the houses might be, because they could be in a flood, you know, in a floodway and stuff like that, because there weren't the regulations in the environment as it is today. And now I'm going to make sure that we accept the plan as laid out. Is that what, is that what?
With all staff comments?
Now, are we approving it or we accepting it?
No, we've already accepted it. That's how we can talk about it. We're looking for approval now. This is, an up or down, either approve or disapprove would be, or take other actions. So it's, you're making a motion to approve this plan?
Yes.
If you could add with staff conditions, and if we wanted to add the two that Bill Houle mentioned, which I've listed as condition eight and nine. Eight was culvert should be cut clear by either a homeowners association or the developer, but it should be specified who's going to be responsible for clearing the culverts. And then nine, have the covenants reviewed by the staff attorney. So if you wanted to.
So the motion has been made by Mr. Kelly to accept, to approve the plan with the conditions as identified by the planner and the two additional conditions suggested by Mr. Houle. We're looking for a second on that motion, which was seconded by Mr. Houle.
Point of information?
Yep.
Before we vote, as it relates to the footprint of a home that John is addressing in relation to what we see in front of us, within our town permitting process, when a resident who might purchase one of these properties comes forward with a request for a building permit, the town, given what has been recently adopted, just as March, could require a site plan from the resident showing the footprint of the home in relation to the topographical features, the flood, wetland areas on that particular site and what have you. So that can be addressed yet further.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded. I'm going to put this motion to a vote. I want it by a show of hands, and Mr. Scarborough was voting, as is from here over. So I'm going to ask for all's in favor of approving this application with the conditions as noted by the planner and added by Mr. Houle, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have four in favor, all opposed.
Neither.
Three opposed. The motion carries. Plan is approved.
Let me make sure I got, okay, opposed.
Opposed were Mr. Scarborough, Mr. Gould, and Mr. Kelly.
And in favor was Mike Ahern.
In favor was Mr. Ahern, Mr. Suckoff, Mr. Houle, Mr. Kukubert. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your due diligence in reviewing these plans. Well, ask the planner as to how many she requires for her. Just one? Thank you for your involvement. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished and other business, and Miriam has added this since your agenda was set out, and I'm going to ask you, Miriam, to give us a short briefing on what's on the table here, Miriam. Excuse me, we have a meeting going on. Thank you. All right, going back. Number seven, unfinished and other business. Miriam has some late-breaking news for us, which she's going to brief us on.
Right, I received a communication from Corey Johnston, who's the engineer, North Point Engineering, for 650 Tenny Mountain Highway, which was that Asian restaurant. And you might remember that last year, the Asian restaurant came and asked for an extension of their site plan approval, and we granted that. And the extension was until September 18, 2009. Then the next month, they came by with a brand-new site plan, and they moved over the building. Our engineer wasn't as happy with it, because when they moved the building over, they proposed to sort of cantilever it over the wetlands, so it would overhang the wetlands, and he just was not as comfortable with the new one. But we looked at it, and, you know, we saw no reason not to approve it. Anyhow, Mr. Johnston called me back and he said, oh, and the reason why they did the second one was because they were concerned about DOT, and it had to do with setbacks. There's a DOT right-of-way, and they were going through the process to have DOT abandon it, and so they didn't really prefer site plan two, but they wanted to do it because they wanted this project to go forward. Now, he said that DOT has approved that request for the right-of-way, which is the driveway, that it was platted as, you know, once it was going to be a road. DOT has preliminary approved that, so Corey asked, can he go back to his original? I did talk to the town engineer, and he said, that's great, because he liked the original one better. He thought it made more sense. Since the planning board did approve the extension, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it right, and that we have a consensus by planning board that it's okay that he goes back to the original plan.
Okay, so what we're going to be discussing is, if there is a discussion, if you recall, the engineer, our engineer, really favored the original plan over the revised one because of less interface with the ESZ. Is that correct?
Yeah, the environmentally sensitive zone, but also wetlands.
So the bottom line is, this is better for the environment and better for the town to go back to the original plan. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we endorse the proposal to revert back to the original plan for this site, as requested by Corey Johnston, the engineering representative for the applicant.
The motion made by Mr. Houle to support and approve returning to the original plan, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Ahern. All those, yes, questions?
It will still have the extension September 18th, it will be a year from today.
Right, it was approved until September 1st.
Okay.
May I ask one question prior to the vote as well?
You may.
Was there a difference in the Shoreline Protection Act between the two plans as well, or was it just the setback with the road? I seem to remember the parking lot changing as a result of the Baker River. By reverting to the old plan, are we ignoring the new shoreline protection rules, I guess? I mean, admittedly, it was approved before, but I don't know how that works and if that matters to us.
Our environmentally sensitive zone is stricter than shoreline protection, and he's going to meet our shoreline, our environmentally sensitive zone. So it should be, it should be fine.
I seem to remember a change in the back corner. Okay, sounds like an insignificant change.
Okay, so the questions are off the table. We now have a motion, and it's been seconded, for the approval of the parties, the so-called Asian restaurant, to go revert to their original plan. All vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And that's the end of unfinished and other business. And we have the number eight, public comments. Any public willing to comment tonight?
Yes, Frank Miller. First, I would like to thank Fred Gould and Mr. Bill Houle for the service of Town of Plymouth. I believe the people of Town of Plymouth will never know the full value of their service to the town as members of the board. And my last comment would be that with some discussion about whether or not the planning board would be, have the authority to deal with restrictions and covenants on deed. When you have a restriction, a private restriction on private property, that is a civil case, if you, members of the planning board initiate actions as part of your approval process that's duly filed in Woodsville, that becomes a public restrictions on private land, and it is an enforceable action on the 674 series, in which, as self-evident through your copies, should a plan, another plan down the road come forward that would be in conflict with which covenants or restrictions or conditions you have placed on that land. So if it's a private restriction on private land, it's a civil case. If it's a public restrictions on private land, and it's done through this board, then you have the authority to defend it, responsibility to concur with it.
Thank you, Frank. Before I ask for this item, I do want to make a couple of comments. I made a decision a month ago not to stand for reappointment, and I informed the board and the planner. I did receive a call from both the administrator and from the vice chair asking me to reconsider, but I had pretty well made my mind up that it was time for me to leave. I've been here three and a half years. I am on record saying I like to see a lot of new blood on the board. The vice chair of the Board of Selectmen asked me what could be done differently. It's probably not exactly the words. I said, I think it would be better served, the board and the public, if there was a little bit of communication between the two chairs. There is literally none now. And they agreed that that was something that should be looked at, and would be probably in the future, it would be addressed. So, but all in all, I enjoyed working with all of you. I enjoyed an awful lot watching Mr. Gosney and Dave Switzer, who, you know, were kind enough to mentor me, and had the able assistance of Bill and my loyal vice chair through this one. So thank you very much, and I thank the public for the opportunity to say, thank you. So you are going to reconsider, or? No, I'm not. Yes.
Maybe I should have brought this up under other business, by supposed public comments, but I'd just like to say thank you to the two of you for all your hard work and your great work. It's been a pleasure and an honor to be serving up here with you, as you call the guidance of, give, at least me, and I think others on the board.
Yes.
If I may just say a few words as well. I gave very serious thought as to whether or not I wanted to continue serving on this board, and not as a regular member, but possibly as an alternate member. And I've decided that I don't want to be re-seated in either capacity. Having made that decision, though, I want to say unequivocally that any member of this board, or anyone in the town offices here who at any time might want to call me on an issue that I may have some line of continuity for, or that I might have some information that they think is of value to them, they're entirely welcome to give me a buzz or send me an email, and I'd be very happy to respond if I feel I can respond to your request. It's been a pleasure for me to serve this board and all of the colleagues that I've had on this board through the 14 years that I've been here. Thank you.
Now, I'll look for that magic motion. Motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Ahern, seconded by Mr. Scarborough. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.